Just to let everyone know, we are going to be going to closed session if the board approves it, and it'll take for about one hour, so just to let you know that. Okay? Good evening, I'd like to call the Canton Township Board of Trustees. Board meeting on March 22, 2022 at 6:05 PM to order. Clerk Segrist, can you please take roll call?
Borninski.
Good evening.
Foster.
Good evening.
Ganguly.
Good evening.
Graham Hudeak.
Evening.
Let the record reflect Clerk Segrist is in attendance. Slavens.
Good evening.
Snyderman.
Hello, I'm here.
Clerk Segrist, can I please have a motion to go into closed session?
Ma'am Supervisor, I am moved that the board go into closed session for the purposes of considering material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute, and particularly the discussion of attorneys' written legal memorandum from MCL 15.268 subsection H, or section 8H of the Open Meetings Act.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segrist, supported by Treasurer Slavens. Clerk Segrist, can you please take roll call on that motion?
Foster.
Aye.
Ganguly.
Aye.
Graham Hudeak.
Aye.
Segrist, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
Borninski.
Aye.
Going to a closed session, we'll be back in approximately an hour.
Hello, good evening again. Can I have a motion to come out of closed session?
Oh moved.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segras, supported by Trustee Snyderman. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Okay, great. The next item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. So I'd like to have a motion to adopt the agenda with addition of item G zero. Consider approving a one-year contract Davis Kirksey Associated Incorporated for grant writing services and an associated 2022 budget amendment.
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segras, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Agenda passed. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of March 1st, 2022?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segras, supported by Trustee Foster. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion passes. Now we are going to have a recognition of Canton Leisure Services 2021-2022 M Parks Innovative Recreation Programming Awards winner. So Greg, would you like to come up or help us out here? I'll read it. Whereas Canton Leisure Services strives to be an innovator at programs and events that embraces and celebrates diversity and inclusion. So this is a recognition of Canton Leisure Services 2021-2022 M Parks Innovative Recreation Programming Awards winner. Whereas the department held its first Pride Outside event in its first Diwali celebration at Heritage Park while fulfilling the department's DEI initiatives and the You Belong Here campaign. Informing residents that there is a place for them here in Canton's programs and facilities. And whereas, over 300 guests dressed in rainbow pride gathered in Heritage Park for Pride Outside event, which included guest speakers, performances, community resources and partners, local vendors, food trucks, beer and wine. And whereas, the intent of the event was to build awareness and education around acceptance in the Canton community, increase opportunities for residents to show and exhibit pride for the LGBTQ plus community, promote safe spaces in parks and recreation. And whereas, over 450 guests dressed in Indian cultural dress gathered in Canton's Heritage Park for the first ever Diwali celebration. A first for our municipality in the state of Michigan to host a celebration of its kind. And whereas, the stage was surrounded by colored lights and luminaries and guests celebrated light over darkness and good over evil. Included guest speakers, performances, activities for children, local vendors and cultural cuisine. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton does hereby congratulate Leisure Services on winning the M Parks 2021-2022 Innovative Recreation Programming Award. They are being commended for their creativity and innovation in programming for the Canton community.
Support.
Motion made and supported by Clerk Segras. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Greg, do you want to say something?
Yeah, I'd like to thank the Board, number one, for their support in all these different activities and programs that our staff has the opportunity to put on for the community. We certainly had a lot of support and involvement from several of our Board members. I'd like to especially thank Trustee Ganguly and Trustee Foster for their support and active involvement in these programs. And I get to take a lot of the credit and recognition for these events, but we couldn't put these on with these special members of our staff here that are joining me this evening. We have Laura Mortier, Evan Sweet and Jenny Franz with us tonight that are really the driving force behind these programs. They are the ones that are out there, out front, developing these programs, working with members of the community. The community was heavily involved in developing these programs too, because we, you know, for us to put these programs on without involving the community, these programs wouldn't be successful. So they really took an active step in reaching out to the community to find out what programs, how these programs could be successful. So I commend them for taking that step and working with the community to develop a successful program. So congratulations to you all, because they're the ones that really made this happen. So, thank you.
Just, we got recognized at our state conference for this and it just, I really think it speaks volumes where our township is headed with all of these things, because honestly, the other communities and cities are, I think, jealous and really in awe of the things that we've been able to do. I mean, several approached us and came up to us, you know, like saying, "Oh my gosh, that's so cool that you have the support of your community to be able to do these types of things." So it's pretty cool. So thank you for the opportunities that you allow us to do.
Come on up. Do you guys got a thing?
Nothing?
Oh, good.
Joe, could you take a picture of us, please? Come on up, Board members. Let's take a picture. Where's your ward? We'll give you a two guess. Like you said, beginning of the mod of your videos, do one more time with our...
Is it gonna be weird? Is it gonna be weird? Do you have a photo of a photo?
Come on up. Congratulations. Did you get this all, Joe?
Yeah, welcome to the...
Congratulations, we're very proud. Next item on the agenda is public comment on agenda items only. So can I have public comment on agenda items only? Anyone in the room? Okay, sir. Go up to the podium, please. State your name. Three minutes, please. And yes, on agenda items. Thank you.
My name is Greg Statchura and I'll comment on the item that was just on the agenda and your self-congratulations for this program, which is apparently leading other libraries in the state of Michigan. This is what our library funds go for. If, I would dare you folks to do the same thing for a Christian organization, a Christian expression of values and virtues. This tribalism that is led by this present administration is unhealthy for any community, but mostly for Canton Township. The leadership of this community has gone downhill severely. I am expressly disappointed in you folks. But I've come to every one of these meetings, you congratulate yourselves on everything you've done. The Canton Newsletter is nothing but a propaganda congratulatory piece. This really is disappointing. This really is disappointing. I have lived in this community since 1979, longer than some of you have been on this earth, and I can tell you, this was a far better community than where you're trying to lead it to. I am grandly disappointed, and I plan to make as many of my fellows in Canton that I know aware of the drift of this. The problem is that most people want from government to be left alone, and that is not what you're doing here. You're not leaving people alone to lead their lives. You're congratulating yourselves with these celebratory programs. Last time I was here, you had this sustainability thing. Not one of you, not one of you asked about the cost in that study for sustainability for Canton. Not one of you, but you have agenda items on here adding more costs. You have an assistant supervisor now adding more costs. Does anyone care about the pocket of the taxpayer? You know, Davy Crockett said long ago, to them, money is but trash, especially when it comes from the purse of the taxpayer. And that is the type of attitude I see in this administration. And I don't expect miracles from you, but I am sorely disappointed, and I'm going to ask other citizens to pay attention, and they will find it the same disappointment I expect. I don't need three more minutes.
Next comment, anyone else? Nope. Okay, anyone online? Okay, we have one person online, has to be an agenda item. C. Mantle, three minutes. Okay, C. Mantle, go ahead.
I wanted to know if I'm able to add something to the agenda? Or for the upcoming agenda?
Uh, no. No, do you have a question on the current agenda? We have a public comments section at the end for general public comments. Okay, so you can wait to...
I'm sorry?
We have an agenda, we have a public comment at the end of the agenda for general public comments, but do you have any questions on the current agenda?
No, I apologize. I'll wait for the, till the end.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, great. All right, any other comments? Any other comments? Any other public comments? No?
Just a comment, Madam Supervisor, that we, it might have been forgotten, that we do have a Christmas and holiday celebration at the end of each year.
Easter Bunny, yes.
And, and an Easter celebration, and so, just so the public knows and understands that.
Yes, so the public knows, we do, we do celebrate all of our residents. And again, cred, congratulations, don't take heart to that. You guys did a great job.
Thank you.
Very proud of you. Okay, great. Public comment closed. Next item on the agenda is the payment of the bills.
Madam Supervisor, I motion that we pay the bills.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Berninski. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is a study session, water and sewer rates, and that is going to be presented by Director Smith.
If I can have access to share my screen, that'd be great.
Yeah?
And Director Trumbull's going to be joining me as well.
Okay, you should be able to do that now.
Okay. So good evening, everybody. It's that time of year again where we take a look at the Water and Sewer Fund and do an analysis of the, of both of those funds after we get our rates changes from GLWA, which we have received back in January. And I can say myself, Public Works and Finance have worked putting together what you have before you. Give you a little bit of information in regards to the current system that we have. We have 471 miles of water main in Canton Township with 5,630 hydrants and 4,474 valves. That's just on the water side. On the sewer side, we have 370 miles of sanitary sewer and 9,419 manholes to maintain. This shows you the 10-year consumption history of the township this year, and of course, I have this little thing blocking my screen. We have just over two and a half million gallons that was used in 2021. But you can see it's been pretty steady going back those 10 years, except for 2012, not sure what was going on then. This is the current budget on the water side. Just shows you, we've got 21, almost $22 million that goes into the water operations. 12, almost 13 million of that is actually the purchase of water from GLWA. The rest of this billing, the rest of the budget is operations and maintenance, water meters expenses, overheads, and then obviously water billing as well. This is the sewer side, about 14, almost $15 million in expenses on the sewer side. Little over $5 million of that is actually for the disposal, which goes to Yucca. We've got some debt service on the sewer side, and then obviously $6 million is a pretty big portion, and that is to operate and maintain the actual sewer system itself. Here's the total overall budget for water and sewer combined, just shy of $40 million to make sure that we are supplying the right system and that everybody has clean water and has their sewage removed appropriately and safely. We need $40 million to operate the system.
I have a question about this chart.
Sure.
$23 million is greater than $16 million, but if you look at the chart, that's the smaller wedge.
That's, that's...
Yeah, you're right.
It just flopped.
I think you're right, yes.
Okay, I just was like, am I missing something?
No, you're not, you're not. So, that's, that's an error on our part.
So, but water is still the greater expense?
Absolutely, yes. If you go back up, yep. Actually, I'm seeing some different numbers on here, but yes. I have to go back and check my math on this, I apologize. We made some last-minute changes today, and I'm seeing that my numbers don't add up. But yes, the water side of this, regardless of the numbers, and it is around $40 million, is definitely the larger of the, of the two budgets. I will correct this before it gets put on the website and also send everybody an updated copy. With that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Wendy as we move into the actual finances of the Water and Sewer Fund, for her to go through the magic here.
Sure, so if you think about the budget, what we try to do is when we're setting our water rates, we look at the overall expenses of the fund of, between the water and sewer, and we kind of back into what the rates we need to charge to be able to collect enough cash to pay for all of the expenses we're expecting out of the Water and Sewer Fund. But where we always start with is, how much cash do we need in the fund? Kind of what's our target and what's our minimum cash balances that we need? We've talked about this in the past. The formula that we had done, and we had a consultant come in a number of years ago to help us with, kind of, kind of has a best case scenario on how much cash you set aside. So ideally, you want a minimum of 25% of your operation maintenance costs of the Water and Sewer Fund to be your minimum cash balance of that budget, but the target's about 30% of your operation and maintenance. The historical investment in assets, depending on the age of your system, if your system's relatively new, you want about 1% of the value of your historical investment in your assets to be in your cash. If it's a really old system, your target's 3%, but we're kind of, we're kind of middle-aged with our system, so we put our target at 2% for that. Then our capital outlay for the next five years, the current year and the next five years, you want to minimally have 15% of the capital, expected capital, in your cash balance, target of 25%. And then from a best-case scenario, for your current portion of debt service, you want about 15% of your debt service as a minimum, or 25% of the target. So if you take that into account for both the water and sewer side, the minimum cash requirement that we would want to have in cash is about $15.6 million with a target of about $23.7. We actually have a fair amount more of that in cash right now. We have about $30 million in our cash right now, which we are planning to offset a portion of that with our current, with our current rates, and I'll get into that in a moment as well. Any questions on that target in minimum cash?
So the minimum, the minimum is the legal minimum?
Um, it's, it's not really illegal, it's a, we had a study that was done by consultants that target, what is the appropriate amounts you want to have set aside for your system in case there's an emergency, in case you have to make some repairs, because you have to have some cash to be able to, to maintain your system. So it's a, it's kind of our, the study that was done years ago, they were the ones who were to set that for us as a best-case scenario. So minimum is, you know, for any community, the minimum that you'd want to have set aside, your target is really what you want to shoot for though, if you can afford to, if you can afford to have it. If you think back, I feel like it was in the, around 2000 maybe, where there wasn't cash set aside in our system, and if you recall, the Canton water rates were going up by like 20% or something to try to establish a minimum amount of cash to get us so we are in a safe, healthy, our, our system is in a healthy financial condition. So after, as a result of that study, we raised our cash balances, and we've been maintaining that since that point in time.
So raising the cash balances is what's, what's led to the $30 million in the Reserve Fund that you were talking about?
The, the result is when we set our water rates, we have to assume a certain amount of consumption, amount, how much water we're going to sell, and we have ended up selling more water than we had anticipated selling. Next table, probably those people in the audience can't see this very well, but you have a copy of this in, in your packet up, up at the dais there. We did something a little bit different this year than we have typically done. This chart, the very first column, if you just focus on that, that's the 2022 budget. What we do is Finance sits down with Municipal Services and looks at the budget. When we talk about the $39 million budget, about two-thirds of the way down the page, you'll see the budgeted operating expenditures, and that first column is about $39 million. So we take a look at what we think we're going to actually need for cash for this year. We look at the budget, we say, do we really need $39 million? You know, we budget kind of conservatively, do we think we're going to actually need to collect that amount of cash or not? So we work with Municipal Services in coming up with that figure. So if you just went straight on the, straight on the expenses, we would need to collect $39 million for 2022. However, we do know there's some expenses in that $39 million that we don't need to collect cash for, such as depreciation expense. Depreciation expense is a non-cash item, we don't need to collect that from our citizens and the users of the system, so we back that out of, out of the $39 million. There's some other revenues that we get, you know, when people pay penalties, that makes up for some cash that we don't need to collect to help maintain our system, interest on our investments, some tap-in fees when people pay cash to join into our system. There's a few various items of revenue that also makes up that, so we don't need to set our rates needing to collect those amount of revenues. However, there's also some items that are not part of expenses, just because of the type of fund that the Water and Sewer Fund is, which is the principal payments on our outstanding debt. That doesn't hit the expense side, so we have to collect cash to pay our principal payments of the debt. And in 2022, we are going to propose using about $4.3 million of that excess cash to help off, offset any rate increases to our residents. We'll get into that in a little bit more, but the variable rate change based on this would be about a 3.6%, and the fixed rate would be about a 1% increase, and the fixed rate change is just simply due to, we aren't changing the methodology of the fixed rate, it just happens to be where our current employee salaries are, are on the wage scale. We didn't change the methodology of that at all. We, this year is the first year that we have really taken a look at the rest of these columns. We wanted to take a look at what could happen over the next five years as well. You know, if we used all of our cash this year, all of our available $7 million of cash, what would that mean if we didn't have any excess cash available in the future years? And what happened, and we're not showing it here, but if you look at the yellow line, you can see that we are proposing in 2023 to use about $3.1 million of cash, nothing in 2024. In 2025, that we are proposing to add cash, that we might need to bill residents to add cash to keep our targets of 950,000, and then in 2026, use cash of 1.3 million. And the impact of the rates are the, are the last two lines, you know, to increase the fixed rate charges, we're just saying 2% because it costs money to maintain our system. We're expecting inflationary increases, nothing more than that to our fixed rates. And then the variable rates, we're expecting that our water rates that are passed along from Great Lakes Water Authority and other costs to go up by inflation. Without that rate increase, if we were to use all of our cash this year in 2022, the $7 million, and without using three-point, having the $3.1 million in 2023, we would have had a pretty significant decrease in our water rates this year, but in 2023, based on the current, what we know today, you know, not knowing how much water we'll sell over the next year, if we used all of our cash today, that means next year we would have had to raise water rates pretty significantly, based on what we know today. So what we are trying to do is kind of smooth in any impact to our residents and not have a large decrease one year, a large increase another year. So based on what we were, what we know today, that's what we are proposing to use for our cash to try to smooth that cash usage over the next five years to stabilize the rates for our residents. You want to go to the next slide, please?
I have a question.
Sure.
So historically, last year, I remember, did we use the same methodology? Like, we, I remember the, the cost went down last year, right?
Yeah, the costs went down last year. We ended up using more cash last year. We looked at it kind of in a vacuum last year, as a one-year snapshot, and not looking at a five-year projection. It's, our water rates are very focused on the variable rate. Our, the majority of our water and sewer rates are a variable rate versus a fixed rate. When you have the variable rate portion of your water and sewer rates, you basically say, I need 39 million, in a nutshell, I need $39 million of cash. I expect to sell 2.5 billion gallons of water. So you take 30 million, divide it by 2.5 billion gallons, and come up with your variable rate. If you end up selling more than 2.5 billion gallons of water, you're going to add cash to your, to your balance, and that's what's happened in a lot of years. If you sell less than that, you're going to have the opposite effect. So we're, we're basing this on selling 2.5 billion gallons of water, which is about the 10-year history, average history on what we sell for our water. Even though our community's been growing, the water usage has not increased. We kind of attribute that to, over the last 10 years, more people, when they replace their appliances, they're using high efficiency, so they're using less water. I think our, I think our highest water that we sold was three, 3 billion gallons, and I feel like that was just before the last recession in 2007, and ever since then, it's gone down pretty significantly.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So this, so this chart kind of goes into that explanation. So if, this is a big, again, kind of confusing chart, but if you look at the first number of, first column of rows on here, it says revenues required to meet the cash requirements, our fixed fee, if you see that $3.1 million, that's the amount of fixed fee we are collecting or we're proposing to collect from the residents, out of the total $30 million that we're saying we need to collect from the residents. So $3.1 million is fixed, we're saying the water revenue, based on the variable rate that we're going to propose to collect, is 16.9 million, and the sewer is 10.5 million. In order to come up with those rates, if we need to collect $16.9 million of water and $10.5 million of sewer, you take those, you divide it by the 2.5 billion gallons of water we're estimating to sell, that comes up with a $6.55 per thousand gallons for the water rate, and $4.47 per thousand gallons for the sewer revenue, which are the cells that are highlighted in blue. So it ends up just being a mathematical equation, after kind of massaging some of the figures, how we, how we're, come up with those proposed figures. So based on that, if you look at the very last column, the increase over the current rate, that 3.61% increase, our, our rates currently as they stand for water are $6.36 per thousand gallons. We're proposing to raise those to $6.55 per thousand gallons, which is about a 19 cents increase per thousand gallons. And the sewer from $3.89 to $4.07, so about an 18 cent increase on the sewer side. Absolutely.
Just a note on that, too, Great Lakes Water Authority, when we get our rates from them every year in January, we were assessed a 3.4% increase from Clerk, Great Lakes Water Authority.
Right, so if, so if you look at the overall water and sewer rates, even though the Great Lakes said 3.4%, the water rate's going up 2.99%, so we're actually, we're proposing to increase those less than Great Lakes Water Authority's passed along to us. So this next slide shows, again, very, and very small, and I'll, I'll read this to people. This is showing the next five years' impact for the low, average and high users of the This is showing the next five years' impact for the low, average, and high users of the system. So this is on a bimonthly usage. A low user of the system uses about 2,000 gallons every two months, and the average user is about 8,000 gallons every two months, and the high user is about 18,000 gallons every two months. So based on the old rates, a user every two months would pay about $34.76 every two months, that would go up to $35.64 every two months. It would increase their annual bill by about $5.28 per year, or about a 2.5% increase. The average user currently, who uses 8,000 gallons every two months, the regular bill currently would be about $96.26, it would go up to $99.36, or about a $3 increase every two months, or $18 increase a year, for about a 3.2% increase. And the high user, who currently pays about $200 every two months, it would go up to $206 every two months, so about a $6 increase, or annually, it will go up about $41 per year, and that's about a 3.4% increase. I don't want to go into all these other ones, I have them here for display purposes, what would happen, but at the, based on the projections that we're showing, we're proposing, and we're not asking the board to approve anything past this year, it's just for demonstration purposes only, because we don't know what's going to happen, we don't know if we'll sell more water, where we're going to have more cash available to offset rates, if we're going to sell less water, where we might need more, you know, cash to help pay for our rates. We're only asking for the current year, we're not even asking for that today, we'll bring that to a future meeting, but what we're proposing at this point is the 2022 rates that we've already showed you. So for the next five years, based on what we know, we would be looking at a 2% to a 3.5% increase for the next four years, five years, if everything holds true, based on what we know today.
Okay, so before the board asks questions, since we have this listed as a study session, are there any questions from anyone regarding this agenda item, water rates, in the audience? Let me just check online. Anyone in line have any questions about the water rates? The water rate presentation? Okay, how about the board? Anyone? Diane?
I don't seem to see it here. For the fixed water rate, what would that, I don't see it on our list, a fixed water rate, and then the fixed with footing and then without, you know, with some, without some?
It's on this, it's on this slide. The current fixed fee, without the footing drains, the current one is $7.13, it's a very top-line item, second column over. And then, this is a monthly fixed fee, $7.13, and we're requesting it to be $7.20 per month. And with the footing drains, $11.20, and that one would actually be going down to That's the, that one's a third-line item.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi Wendy, I see on, I think it's page A6, the projected cash needs over five years. You have the average five-year inflation rate, and I'm just wondering if that, if you think that rate is accurate for right now, and if it will be, you know, if that will hold for, you know, you have, I think, 3% over the next few years they're listed, and if you might need to adjust that.
You're absolutely right. The current inflation's much higher than that for, you know, this first part of the year, I think it's actually upwards of 6% when we're looking at these first few months. What we did is we looked at the five-year average and the 10-year average, and it was all around 2.5%. We had to kind of go based on history of something, you know.
Right, I'm just wondering, like, in the, you know, maybe next year, it might not be that 3% that you have, you might need to adjust it up.
Absolutely, I completely agree with you that that's a potential. We are also assuming that we're going to sell 2.5 billion gallons of water this upcoming year, and we all know when inflation goes up, and what's the first thing that people reduce, you know, if they have to choose between putting gas in their car and watering their lawn, they're probably going to put gas in their car. So, you know, there's a lot of unknowns right now of what's going to happen in this upcoming year. We are of the fortunate state that right now, we're still maintaining our target cash balance, and if we ever at one point in time had to make a decision to go somewhere between our minimum and target cash balance to help augment, because inflation was up, the board has that flexibility to make, to make those decisions as well. So I do think there's that potential, that inflation's going to go up and costs, we might need to collect more. There's also the potential that we sell more water than we're, you know, anticipating, and that's going to give us available cash to help augment any potential inflationary increases. But that's really why we weren't comfortable suggesting using all of the cash, available cash balances this year, because we are not quite sure what's going to happen next year.
Yep, that makes sense.
Thank you.
Diane, did you have something else? Oh, sorry. Anyone else? Michael?
Yeah, I have a question, and I apologize if I didn't get it the first time around, but, so on the 2022 minimum and target cash requirements, so a minimum of 15 million, a target of 23 million, so then where does that fit on the five-year projections on the next page? Because I can't, I don't understand.
Yeah, so that's the yellow, the yellow bar on that next page is showing all of the cash needs. If you look at that, if you add up all those together, that's about $7.8 million of cash used over the next five years. Our current cash balances are about $30 million, so that is using that $30 million over the next five years. Excuse me. The difference between the target and the $30 million over the next five years.
You're starting at 30 million in cash reserves, you're potentially doing, you're proposing a $4.3 million transfer this year to help try to eliminate a higher water rate increase for residents.
Correct.
And you're budgeting potentially, and I know you're not asking today, or technically we're not asking for anything today, we're studying this, but you're potentially proposing, under this five-year projection plan, that we increase, that we do a $3.1 million transfer next year to try to help eat what could be a rate increase as well. Nothing is happening in 2024, then we've got adding to fund balance, it looks like, in 2025, and then 2026, another potential $1.3 million dip from that. And so at the end of that, you would be looking at $22 million left in our fund balance after the six-year period, which would be about, leaving our fund balance at about 73% of our annual operations budget. Based on my math, if our operations budget minus depreciation and all of the non-real costs, the accounting costs that aren't real, you're looking at a $30.6 million operating budget for 2022. That changes later on, it gets more expensive, right?
Correct.
But that's a healthy fund balance, that's still 0.73% fund balance, and that gets us to our target cash requirement that you're talking about right there, if we can afford it.
Correct.
That's interesting. Yeah, that's, that's really interesting. Like, I'm almost inclined to feel like dipping below that number might be appropriate right now, given the economic situation people are in, and not feeling like I would want to raise rates on folks, although this is a modest potential increase. Like, I might feel more comfortable increasing that fund balance appropriation to try to avoid a potential increase this year. Do you know what it would take to stay neutral this year? I should have asked you this prior to the meeting, and I apologize.
Expert of this is right in front of me, but I will see if I can figure it out.
And so I've been like, preoccupied with all of the voting stuff coming up, typically try to ask these questions before a board meeting, but it's a study session, so we're kind of, you know, we cut it loose a little bit.
Wendy, is your mic on?
Yes.
Oh, because we were just having a hard time hearing you. There you go, thanks.
Just to give a little historical knowledge, too, I don't know what happened in 2019, but in 2020, rates were flat, we kept them the same, and then last year, rates went down 10%. I think that kind of speaks to our new process of looking at a five-year smooth process to make sure that we don't have those spikes, those ups and downs within the rates, and hopefully try and smooth any expenses and increases over time.
Right. No, there's a lot of wisdom to that, and I really appreciate that. I'm just very concerned this year in particular, with how much inflation and gas prices have increased. I don't, I'm just a little bit nervous about hitting people at the water pump, too. That feels, I get the wisdom of trying to smooth it out over five years, I would hate to see a rate increase in 2026 or something like that. That said, when your fund balance is 73% of your operating costs, I don't think I've ever seen a fund that has that high of a cash reserve. I've never seen that in my life.
So I don't want to promise anything, because I don't like doing quick math without double-checking everything, because I probably have made, will have made a faux pas somewhere. But based on increasing the cash from 4.3 to 5 million, it looks like the variable rates would be like a 0.88% increase, if we increase the cash used by 700,000 up to $5 million.
Adding an extra 700,000, you're saying?
Yes.
And that dips the fund down to like 70, 71%, which is still a healthy fund balance.
We still have five years to look at it, I mean, this is, it's very healthy still as it stands at the end of '22, without a doubt, and...
And I know GLWA stiffed us, right, and we're stuck between the residents who buy water, because we all need water to live, and GLWA, which is giving us a huge rate increase.
Yeah, that would keep, that would keep every, that would keep every user, from the low, medium, and high, to under 1% increase, if we use 700, you know, $5 million instead of 4.3 million.
Yeah, I would just ask that before we bring the final proposal, we kind of flirt with that number a little bit, and maybe see if, if there's a way to serve both, if there's a way to keep the five years smooth, but like, you know, a dollar doesn't go as far today as it used to, I can tell you that much.
But with the caveat of, you know, who knows what's going to happen this upcoming year? You know, that could, that could make something have to go up higher in the future, but we don't know that today, right? We're looking at what, with what we know today, and kind of looking in the crystal ball, and that might not happen. So, you know, we're talking $700,000, which isn't going to make or break this fund by any means.
We already, I'm sorry, we talked about a pump, a pump station on the east side of Canton Township, is that our, is that, is the money for that potentially, is that in that $30,000 number that we talked about? Or is that an expense that we've already realized?
Are you talking about the west side?
We have one on the east side.
We have one of the, oh, that pump station, no, that is not calculated, well, yes, those are, there's improvements to the system, but the developers are going to be putting that in, and then this fund will be reimbursing that difference, and we'll be recapturing those fees from potential, from the future users, yes. Yes, yes.
Okay.
There's also some, some activity going on the north side of the township, though, to control the...
Yeah, we've got all those improvements, OHM had presented earlier in the year about some system improvements that are occurring in 2023, so that will affect, that's not going to affect anything for this year, but then next year, we'll realize the change in the system. They're doing that change on the north side with the PRVs and looping the system to try and create some, some better flows on the west side of the township. And then after that, we'll do another analysis of the system to make sure that, that it's operating the way that we everybody anticipated, we'll run the models.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, I'm done.
Steven?
Yeah, thank you, and I appreciate the new type of format and looking at it, trying to smooth things out, keep increases to a minimum when we have to do them. I enjoy decreases, like everyone else. And Director Trumbull, you and I have been at this for a while now, and we, we remember the days when there were lots of major increases from Great Lakes Water or Detroit Water or whatever it was at the time. And so are you assuming that the, that Great Lakes Water will keep its increases to a minimum over the next five years as well? And do you, have you talked to them, and do we know that to be a fact?
Director Smith can probably talk a little bit more to Great Lakes Water, but Great Lakes Water has kind of committed to not raising rates over a certain percentage over, over a longer-term period. Great Lakes has changed a significant amount of their fee to a fixed fee that gets passed along to us, so it's, it's pretty determined what, what we're going to get charged from them. So we assumed overall, with all of our expenses, a 3% increase, including Great Lakes, which, based on the history, seems reasonable, and based on what they've committed to the, to the users of the system, to be in the ballpark as well. Director Smith might have something further.
Yeah, I can confirm what she just said. We're, we're part of meetings that start in October of the previous year, and they go through their whole capital plan, so they have a lot of improvements that they're doing to the system, but to say that they've moved their model and a lot more of it is on the fixed fee, because that's actually what it takes to run the system, that's much more of a known cost that we have every year, as opposed to the variable consumption cost. So I would feel confident, I mean, the thing of it is, it is totally unpredictable, but I would say that they have committed to keeping those increases at a minimum.
Yeah, okay. I mean, we've seen in the past, communities drop out, and then we have to absorb the impact of that.
Right, and I, and I will say to, Great Lakes Water Authority is much more transparent, and I think I noticed a lot more transparency this year when working with them, and they started their rate process earlier. So we have more time to then go and take our rate increases and put it into this system, and we're not rushed to get something done by May.
Okay, thanks to both of you.
Anyone else? So then what is the date we are going to come forward to the board with the suggested rate?
We'll run, go back and run some more numbers, but probably on the 12th of April, we'll get that before the board.
Of course, the board, you can ask any questions of Wendy or Jade before that or during that time.
Based on, based on what I'm gathering today, I'll plan on presenting rates with a $5 million usage of cash, using cash of $5 million, unless I hear another model before then, so expect to see a recommendation with using $5 million of cash, not the 4.3 that we're showing here, unless we hear otherwise, and we'll run those figures. And if they're vastly different than what, you know, if I, if I mess something up on my spreadsheet, I'll send a message out to the board in advance of that as well.
And we will update this presentation, one, to correct my error from the beginning, and then also to update these numbers here to reflect what we're actually going to do moving forward, and we'll send that back out.
Great, thank you.
And then, just for everybody at home and in the audience, once they're passed, and this is formal, this presentation here will actually be posted on the website as well.
And when do those rates take effect, then? In May? Okay, great, thank you. Okay, next board agenda item is consent calendar. Can I have a motion to, for the consent calendar?
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board approve the present, approve the consent calendar as presented. Item C1, consider approval of annual maintenance and technical support agreement for CityWorks Asset Management Software. And item C2, consider award of a purchase order contract to Bell Equipment Company for an Enviro site Rover X-HD camera as bid through the state of Michigan, MI deal purchasing program. And item C3, finally, a resolution declaring the month of April as fair housing in Canton Township, fair housing month in Canton Township, sorry.
Motion made by Clerk Segras, supported by Trustee Berninski, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay.
Consent calendar passes. Next item on the agenda is the general calendar. Item G0, consider approving a one-year contract Davis Kirksey Associated Incorporated for grant writing services and an associated 2022 budget amendment.
All right, let me get down here. Madam Supervisor, I move, wait, what was the one you just read?
Um, the G0. Kirksey.
Okay, I was like, this is not right. Okay. Madam Supervisor, I move to approve a one-year contract for Ga- a one-year contract for grant writing services with David Kirksey Associates Incorporated in the amount of $36,000, and to approve the attached amendments to the 2022 general fund, fire, and police budgets.
Motion made by Clerk Segras, supported by Treasurer Slavens. The township is requesting the board approval, one-year contract for grant writing services with Davis Kirksey Associates Incorporated in the amount of $36,000. This request also includes an associated 2022 amendment to the township budgets. The township of Canton would like to retain an experienced grant writer for the immediate availability and exclusivity, exclusivity of the function of seeking and obtaining grant dollars for visions and projects to provide public services and improve services for Canton citizens, visitors, and businesses. Grants support critical recovery initiatives, innovative research, and many other programs to help move Canton forward. Director Ba, would you like to add to that?
Certainly, with the, some of the vision and the opportunities that we see ahead, having an expert on staff is going to be very helpful. We actually have Linda in the, in the audience today. She's sitting in the front row. She has a real long history in this area and this arena. So we hope to be more successful as a township, at least in the police, fire, and throughout the township, being able to use her expertise to acquire some grant dollars. And right now is, I think, a special time in our history, at least in the state, where there's so much money available. And to have someone on staff to help us through this time period is going to be very helpful.
Thanks, Director Trumbull. Would you like to add anything?
You know, nothing further than Director Ba added. We're really excited to work with her moving forward to help the township get some grant dollars. Sounds like she's got a lot of experience helping us kind of prioritize what are the winners so we can focus our efforts on what will truly help the township move forward. So excited to work with her.
Thank you. Linda's right here in the front row. Anybody, any, any questions you have and want to ask? Okay.
So I'm wondering if there are plans for maybe after six months or after a year to get some kind of report so that we have an idea of, you know, if we've spent this money wisely and, and have actually been able to secure any grants.
Yes, we can do that. Believe me, as soon as we get grants, we will definitely tell everybody.
Right. But I just think it would be good to have, you know, some sort of report at, at, you know, the end of a period of time to, to see how it's going and.
Sure, sure. We can do that every three months. And it is, it is important. Like you said, we have a lot, there's a lot of grants out there right now. Gary, Senator Gary Peters just announced grant openings between March 1st and March 31st for local projects. So we would like to jump on that. There's a lot of grants coming down from the federal government and the state government. So we hope to glean all that we can. And Linda has a lot of experience with that and working with other communities, so she can help us see what we're eligible for and help us get into that portal right away.
Yeah, no, I think, I think this is really exciting and looking forward to getting some of those.
Steven, did you have a question?
I was just saying, going to say, welcome, first of all. And second of all, it's something that I've been in favor of for a long time, and I'm looking forward to it paying off exponentially. So, yeah, I, good luck to you, and good luck to all of us. I think it's going to be money well spent.
Michael?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, you know, I know Director Ba has spoken very highly of you. We're very excited to bring you on board. And I think it's pertinent to at least some of the public comments we had earlier today, right? That we have a very ambitious agenda that is, can be costly at times if we decide that we want to see it all realized. And to this, to the extent that we can bring in revenue while continuing to keep tax rates flat exactly how we have up to this point would be awesome. You know, if we can kind of take our existing money that we've got and, and work with other government entities and other nonprofit entities and non-governmental actors to bring more, more funds into Canton Township so that we can deliver for the residents in a way that is still fiscally responsible. This is, this is, it's beautiful because it, it balances both investing in the community while also being fiscally responsible. So I like to see that. So I think this is a good direction to go in.
Summer?
As someone who feels like I spend most of my day job writing grant proposals, I'm glad to see that we're bringing this to the township. I know how technical a lot of grant proposals can be, and having someone with that experience is not only a time saver, it, it increases the likelihood that the grant will be approved. So I am glad that we're doing this, and I'm glad to see that the township is looking for other revenue sources as we have for quite a while. So, thank you.
Who else? Great. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Thank you. We'll look forward to working with you soon. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, item G1, consider contract amendment with Great Lakes Contracting Solutions LLC for the Canton Center Ford to Warren Full Reconstruct Road Project and approve a contract amendment with Fishbeck LLC for construction, engineering, and testing.
Madam Supervisor, I don't know that I've ever been, ever been more excited to move for a motion in the history of my time as clerk in five years. But I move to award a construction contract amendment and purchase order to Great Lakes Contracting Solutions LLC for the Canton Center Road Ford to Warren project in the amount of $4,498,037.92 with a 10%, oh, no, I'm just getting started, with a 10% contingency of $449,803.79 for a total contract amount of $4,947,841.71.
You said four thou, four, say four, read that number again.
From the fund listed and.
Mr. Clerk, can you read the dollar amount again? You, you said 4,000, 4,000, not 4 million.
Excuse me? 4 million?
Yes.
900, well, it's math. I mean, you take the first number and add the second number. But, okay, 4,947,841.71 from the attached account number listed, and to approve the attached budget adjustment.
Motion made by Clerk Segras, supported by Trustee Ganguly.
Foster.
I'm sorry, Foster, you guys with these masks.
There's a second, there's a second one when we're done with this.
Want to read it now or after we're done?
They are separate companies, so I would do them in separate motions.
Hey, in November 2021, the township board approved the extension of the contract with Great Lakes Contracting Solution LLC to perform the 2022 major road concrete project for Canton Center Ford to Warren. Engineering Services recommends approval of the contract with Great Lakes Contracting Solutions LLC for the Canton Center Road Ford to Warren project in the amount of $4,498,037.92 with a 10% contingency of $449,803.79 for a total contract amount of $4,947,841,071. To accommodate the larger project scope of work, ES also recommends approval of a contract amendment with our engineers Fishbeck LLC for construction, engineering, and testing for an amount not to exceed $450,000. Director Smith, would you like to add anything?
Do you want me to go through some of the processes we're going to go through? Or do you want to talk about that?
Yes.
Okay. So I guess first and foremost, this is almost a $6 million project, and it's the first total reconstruct project that Canton Township has traveled, has ever undertaken of a five-lane, five-lane road. These are coming directly from the road millage dollars that was approved back in 2018. So we're pretty excited about this from an MST's perspective, and hats off to our engineering firm, or engineering department for working so hard to get this before you. We will have an informational meeting this, on April 5th at 2 o'clock. The Zoom information is actually located on the website. If anyone's interested in hearing the technical process that we'll go through, because this will be a full season reconstruct, so from mid-April through the fall, you will see this project occurring. And with that, I just, we'll take any, any other questions if there's anything to add.
In addition to that, we also, three of us went up and down Canton Center Road, business to business, to make sure that not only we sent mailers to the businesses so we can let them know what was happening, but we handed them and spoke face-to-face with who, who was in, in their shop at the time, to make sure that we keep communications open, and we encourage the businesses to call in on April 5th so that they can understand the exact date of what was going to happen, which way traffic is going to be routed for the, the project. Any questions or comments? Summer?
I am very happy to see this project finally come before the board. I know we, we talked about it when we approved the five-year roads plan, but I'm happy that, you know, it's finally here. As we all have seen, this particular season has been particularly brutal, especially for the stretch of Canton Center Road. I think I want to ask the question, and I kind of know the answers, but I think a lot of residents in the community want to know some, I don't want to say guarantee, but surety, that, that we're not going to see the issues with this road after the full reconstruction that we saw after Wayne County tackled the initial road repair back in, was it 2016? So can you talk some about that?
Sure. So the construction process that happened back in 2016 was done by the county. To say that the quality of the material that was put down is really what's at fault, it's called ASR, and there's a lot of those construction projects that are around the state and actually around the country that had a bad mix that year. So that is a direct result of, what you see out there is a direct result of an ASR breakdown in the cement. So, but to talk about guarantees, there is no such thing as a guarantee with a road project, but we will do everything we can to keep the contractors accountable. After the project is done, we do go through a punch list and will not sign off on the final project until probably next year in 2023. Finance loves that because obviously our invoicing is always a little bit behind and goes into the next fiscal year, but that's how those construction projects work because we need to make sure that those projects are up to our satisfaction and that we do go through that punch list. And anything that needs to be corrected, we do call the contractors back out.
And I, I just also want to note that, that it's a full road reconstruction, so it's not like the concrete panel replacements like we've done in the past. And also to note that, as you mentioned, it is a pretty expensive project. So we will inevitably get the question of why can't we do this on every road? And because it takes almost a year's worth of road millage funding just to do this stretch of road. So just to add that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Kate?
Yeah, so I also noticed that it's changed from pavement rehabilitation to full pavement reconstruction. And I was just wondering if you could speak a little bit about that because I know I've heard a lot of community members talk about, well, you know, we can't just resurface. And so I think that, that's, that this has changed really is going to be very beneficial to the.
Right. So if you want to compare it to what we did on Canton Center last year in 2021, you'll see that there's been some, some rehab and preservation of the current cement that's there. And there's some areas that were just cut out and then replaced. That's actually is an M-dot standard. Does it look the nicest? No, it is functional. We have seen a few areas that we needed to go back and repair, but overall, those areas did have maintained the last two years with the projects we've done. This being a total reconstruct, that entire road will be taken out from curb to curb. And you will see that go all the way from Ford Road up to Warren. So it'll absolutely come out. You'll see that done in three phases. And I don't think it's changed, but I think they're going to do the, there's, I'll have to refer back to my notes because I know we've been working with the engineers and the rollout, and I can't remember which phase is coming first, whether it's the middle three lanes or the outer two lanes.
Who else? Michael?
I mean, I have to, I just have to say it. I am ecstatic about this project because that stretch of Canton Center Road has been a symbol for so many people in this community about infrastructure in general, government service in general, and it's discouraging. And when you drive on it, it makes you wonder why you pay taxes. This is the stuff I hear routinely over and over again. Now, this is a very complicated thing, right? Your property taxes in general don't go towards roads, although now they are. We passed a roads millage here in Canton Township in 2018, and we are using the proceeds of that roads millage to take on the worst stretch of road in Canton Township. And I know we approached some other partners in this process who have more jurisdiction over roads than we do, and, and they were not interested in participating in that. In fact, their recommendation was going to be to do the exact same thing that was done a few years ago. And I was very discouraged about that because I, I mean, I don't like wasting money. And I know spending one or $2 million to patch a road that is riddled with ASR, you might as well put one or $2 million in a barrel and light it on fire. And we're not doing that. We're finally taking all the ASR out, removing the entire road and starting from scratch. And this is smart. This is efficient. This is how it's supposed to be done. And at the end of this, people are going to be able to drive on really, really good quality road. And I'm extremely grateful about that. I like that we are still pushing our partners in Lansing and in Detroit at the county to help fund this because I do not think it is equitable for Canton taxpayers to shoulder the entire burden. However, I do like that we are leading the way. That shows courage. So, you know, let engineering know we appreciate that they're taking this on. And, and I do know that their work is done well because I've seen their work. I've seen their work on Lily. I've seen their work on Sheldon, and they, and they have done a lot of amazing work. So I'm really excited about this.
Right. I, I guess we'll let the cat out of the bag, too. I don't have the exact dollar amount, but because of the comments, we heard late today, I did actually hear from Wayne County Executive Warren Evans, and the county is going to participate in this project. I am still working through the dollar amounts of what's going to be shared in this project. So we really didn't want to say anything till we knew the amount, but I will say that we, that call came in late this afternoon. So we will be working with the county on this. And their engineering department has been very receptive as well.
That's great news. Yes. Good job.
Sorry, Michael.
Hey, Marie.
Tanya?
Oh, Steven wanted to say.
Steven, Tanya?
Thank you. Echo everyone's comments. I'll sleep better tonight knowing that we're doing a full resurfacing of that road, and I appreciate that. And your cat out of the bag maybe answered this question, but the amount that you mentioned is, in my recollection, more than the annual amount that we have for surface roads out of the road program. So I was wondering if it was going to utilize two years' worth of that amount and if we're still planning on doing the Warren Road project as well.
That's a great question. Since the initiation of the road millage in 18, we've had fund balance in the road funds, and that stays with that. So we actually had built up a fund balance that could actually take on this entire project. Without the news from the county about them contributing, it would actually would have taken Warren Road and probably pushed it to 2023. But now with that announcement, I think we're going to be able to do both projects this year. So Warren Road is out to bid right now. We'll have those final numbers. And then once we work out all the construction on this and the final costs and the cost share with the county, then we'll be able to go forward and recommend an award for Warren Road.
Great. Thank you again, and thank you to the people of Canton for voting for this program. I think it's been a great success.
On that, on that Warren Road piece, if I may, just because you brought it up, if the county is going to be doing a resurfacing at Warren Road right in front of the fire station, at the same time, we're going to be putting in a pocket park next to the fire station, it might make sense to try to put a mid-block crossing, pedestrian crossing there for kids to get across that road safely. If they're going to be tearing that road up, it might make sense to do that. And I don't know if that's impossible to do, but when I heard that we were, that Warren was added to the, to the, to the, to the list, I thought, well, I, I hope, I hope DPW, I hope Wayne County DPW knows we're working on getting county money for a park next to that fire station. And I hope that we have some connectivity involved in this.
Yeah, we can, we can take a look at that. It's a busy road. Mid-block crossings are, are not really, not really like those on a road like that. But we can definitely, especially with the incoming park, we can look at what some other possibilities are there, and we can work with the county.
Yeah, I think Greg was going to start looking at that also and meeting with you about that.
In regards to the park?
That particular park, yes.
We do have a light at the fire station.
Yes, that they control inside the fire station. Yep.
So we could do some sort of pad crossing there. We can take a look at that because we've been successful doing that with the county in the past.
And Linda's already nodding a grave.
I know, I see her, so.
Help us some grants for that.
It's going to get us funding for it.
So, perfect. All right.
See, you're already on the job. Tanya?
I just, I am very excited about this project because I drive on that road almost every time I come to this meeting, and I try to avoid it as much as I can. So I have seen, I have, like, recently have, I've. So I have seen, I have, like, recently, I've even spoken to people who don't live in Canton, but they know about this road and how bad it is. And I think it's a very exciting time for us to invest in infrastructure and that we had plans. And if we can use our road millage to do that.
Thank you.
Dollars used in the community.
No, thank you. And I just want to say also the business. So I went with David Norwood, who's in the back, who's our municipal services deputy, along with Thomas Payden, the president of the Canton Chamber. And going to the businesses, you would be surprised. A lot of them were kind of saying, well, we know this is going to probably be a dent in things, but it needs to happen. They all talked about vehicles that were in their parking lots over this past freeze thaw. And so they, they were very happy about that. Also, like you said, we're partnering with the county, but our group is going to be leading that. And I know our team will be out there frequently speaking to the businesses and the residents and keeping communications open. And I think that's going to be a great add also.
And businesses will continue to be open, and there will be full access to those businesses during the entire time of construction.
Yes, and they'll be, we'll put their signs. So yes, we are open. Those will be put out on the curb so that they, people can show that the businesses are open. They were worried about that also. So we'll relax our sign ordinance so they can show their signs at the curb there. Great, thanks. Any other questions from the board? No? Okay, great. Thank you. So all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Nay? Motion passes. What is the motion, second motion on that one?
Madam Supervisor, I move to award a contract amendment and purchase order to Fishbeck LLC under their existing master services agreement for CE Services on the Canton Center Road forward to Warren Project for an amount not to exceed $450,000 from the fund balance associated with that.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segras, supported by Trustee Berninski. Okay. Any questions on that motion? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G2, consider approval of agreement with Kerry and Paul Group for 2022 Thursday Night Concert Series Entertainment.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve a purchase order to Kerry and Paul Group, PO Box 187 in Troy, Michigan, 48099, in the amount of $11,000 to be paid from the account number listed for professional and contractual services.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segras, supported by Treasurer Slavens. Canton Leisure Services requesting approval of a purchase order in the amount of $11,000 to Kerry and Paul Group to provide entertainment for the 2022 Thursday Night Live Concert Series. Funds are budgeted and account-listed, professional and contractual services. Director Homberger, do you want to add anything?
Sure. So these are for our standard Thursday night concerts in line with our typical amounts that we've spent in past years. You haven't seen these contracts come to the board in the past because typically we are having individual contracts with an agent here and a band there. It just happens that several of the bands, I think it's five of the bands that we're working with this year, all are using the same agent. So we have one contract with the same agent, and the total amount came to over $10,000. So I discussed it with Director Trumbull. And for transparency and just to be upfront with the board, we wanted to bring it to the board just to make sure everything was, instead of doing individual POs and individual contracts, we lumped it all together. But it's really nothing different than what we've done in the past, and it's included in our budget.
Thank you. Any board questions or comments?
Forward to it.
Yes. Look, the Thursday Night Concert Series went real well last year, especially coming out of COVID for the summer. So I expect that'll be the same this year. I think the residents really enjoyed it. All right. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G3, consider acceptance of Masco Corporation Lead Like a Girl sponsorship of $10,000 and Transpire sponsorship of $5,000, and consider approval of related budget adjustments.
Madam Supervisor, I move to accept the sponsorship from the Masco Corporation for the Block Youth and Teen Center programs for the sum of $15,000 and to approve the attached budget amendment.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segras, supported by Trustee Berninski. For the fourth year in a row, Canton Leisure Services and the Block Youth and Teen Center were offered a $10,000 sponsorship from Masco Corporation for the 2022-23 school year to support the implementation of the Lead Like a Girl program and a $5,000 sponsorship for the 22-23 school year to support the implementation of the Transpire program. Due to previous donations from Masco Corporation, $13,000 was budgeted as revenue for the '22 budget year. Leisure Services is recommending that the board accept the sponsorship and make associated budget amendments. So Director Homberger or Laura, would you like to comment?
Yeah, so this is something that Recreation Supervisor Laura Mortier has really cultivated a partnership with Masco Corporation along with several other organizations. Frankly, she's really been instrumental in soliciting a lot of partners and sponsors and bringing in a lot of revenue that helps offset a lot of our programs, including several of the programs that we're recognized for earlier this evening. So this is just one of the ways that we help offset some of the expenses for the programs that we do. So thank you to Laura for those efforts. And that's pretty much it.
Thank you. Laura, would you like to add anything? No? Any questions from the board? Great. Stephen?
I would just like to thank Masco for supporting these programs that support residents in our community that are at risk and helping them. So I think we all agree about that.
Yes. Thank you. There's a waiting list to that program also. So, yeah, the monies are definitely needed. Anyone else? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G4, consider approval for the creation of two full-time park laborer positions for the Leisure Services Department.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the creation of two full-time park laborer positions for the Parks Division in the Leisure Services Department and to approve the attached budget amendment to the 2022 budget.
Motion made by Clerk Segras, supported by Treasurer Slavens. As a result of the January 18, 2022 study session, the Board of Trustees approved a $150,000 budget increase to add new positions to the Leisure Services Parks Division. After factoring in wages and benefits, Leisure Services is recommending to create two full-time park laborer positions totaling $152,046 annually. Director Homberger, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, just that these are, these positions will help to offset some of our losses in the seasonal positions, help give us some stability for our division out there. We've certainly added many assets over the years and not added to our full-time labor force as much as the assets that we maintain. We added one position a couple of years ago. Or, you know, we did, we certainly appreciate a few weeks ago when we increased the seasonal wage scale, but we need some stability out there so we're not as dependent on seasonal and part-time employees. So this will go a long ways in helping stabilize that workforce and give us the consistency that we need to maintain all of the assets for the Parks Department.
More questions or comments? No? So like you said, we did increase the wages for part-time. And how many jobs do we have available right now for the summer still?
For the Parks Department or in total?
Well, both. How much for the parks alone?
The Parks Department, we probably need about 15 to 18 individuals. We have one application right now from a returning staff member, but that's it for the Parks Department. In total for our department, we probably need anywhere from 150 to 200 employees still for the summer.
To run the camps in the summer for the kids, which we already have a waiting list for.
Correct. So 40 for the summer camp programs to run at 100% capacity. So if you know somebody, if you want to pick up a few hours here and there, if anything that you want to do, you know, I'll help you fill out an application, whatever it takes.
Mowing lawns, anything for the summer.
The interview is, you know, consists of breathing on a mirror at this point. No, I'm kidding. I'm kidding. We're not that bad. We certainly want, we want quality applicants, and that's, that's why we're paying. We increase the pay so that we can get, attract quality applicants because we want, you know, we run quality programs, and we want to have quality folks that can help us run those quality programs. But these positions will certainly help us.
We're also short lifeguards. So we are, pools closed on Sunday because we are short lifeguards, like a lot of other pools in the area.
Yes.
So we pay for training and get you certified.
Yes. Free lifeguard training, absolutely.
Any questions or comments from the board? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G5, consider approval of amended agreement with Dancing Feet at the Summit on the Park.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve an amendment to the Dancing Feet, the Dancing Feet Agreement to pay $20,000 to Canton Township for the 2021-2022 dance season.
Motion made by Clerk Segras, supported by Treasurer Slavens. Dancing Feet has been a longstanding partner of Canton Township and a resident dance company for many years. The dance studios located on the second floor of the Summit on the Park have been used primarily for dance classes provided by Dancing Feet since the summit's opening in 1996. Due to the enforcement of lengthier restrictions at the Summit on the Park, Dancing Feet was unable to run their classes at full capacity for the 21-22 dance season. As a result, many clients chose to leave Dancing Feet to attend other dance studios who had less restrictions, causing Dancing Feet to experience loss in clientele and revenue. Therefore, Leisure Services is recommending to amend the 21-22 fee for Dancing Feet to a total of $20,000. Director Homberger, you want to add anything?
Yeah, certainly. Dancing Feet has been a longstanding partner. They were actually, started their program in the basement of this building prior to the construction of the summit. And they were part of the design process for the dance studios at the summit and have filled that space since the construction. They've been with us for a very long time. They certainly took a big hit along with everybody, including us at the summit during the downturn because of the COVID restrictions. And we had some, as the township, we certainly wanted to be more cautious than maybe your typical business. And we institute its strict restrictions because we wanted to make sure that we were protecting everybody, including our employees and guests at the summit. So Dancing Feet had stricter restrictions than maybe a private business that was located elsewhere. And we all certainly appreciate that. But some individuals that participated in their programs chose to go elsewhere, and that certainly affected their business. We amended their contract last year at a significantly lower rate than this. So they are doing their best to get back to normal, but they're not there yet. So we're trying to work with them to be good partners, but also challenge them and not just give them a free ride either.
Any questions or comments from the board? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Item G6, consider approving the addition of one deputy chief position and three police officers positions with an associated amendment to the '22 police budget.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the addition of one deputy chief position and three police officer positions, increasing the overall sworn officer count from 96 to 100 and to approve the attached listed amendment to the 2022 police budget for six months of salaries and fringes.
Motion made by Clerk Segras, supported by Treasurer Slavens. The Police Department is requesting to add one deputy chief position and three police officer positions. The deputy chief position falls under the non-union classified merit commission and would be filled in accordance with language established in the current Canton Command Officer Association Bargaining Unit Agreement. The deputy chief position will start at grade 12, step 5 of the merit salary system. The three police officer positions would be filled in accordance with the currently established human resources procedures and will fall under the Police Officers Association of Michigan Bargaining Unit Agreement. This request also includes an amendment to the '22 police budget for six months of salary for the four new positions, increasing the department's total number of sworn officers from 96 to 100. And I believe we had previous study sessions where we went over these details. Director Bow, do you want to add anything?
Appreciate the board's consideration. This is a growing community. And since its history as a police department, we've always run a lean police organization. And this, if you look at the Exhibit B, it shows we'll still be one of the most lean police departments out there. While at the same time with our programming, we are expanding the types of programming that we're doing, which includes not only the training division, how we accomplish training, but also when you're looking at our constitutional holistic policing model, we're looking at the expansion of our diversion programming and having the proper oversight for not only diversion, but also our field training program, our social worker program, and how that's going to morph in the future. And you'll see a little bit of that April 5th as I think it's a community decision how our service as a police department expands and grows in the future. So we need this oversight to have a professional policing agency and to be at the head of our game. So I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any board questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Oh, I'm sorry, Kate.
She hides her hands.
She hides her hands. Do this, Kate.
It's just a comment. I appreciated that you gave us the proposed organizational chart. And I think the way you've divided up the duties is very sensible. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? See your hand.
Yeah, sorry. I, yeah, you know, Chad, you and Chris in particular as well, the fire chief, both stepped up in the middle of COVID when we took, and we kind of, we split the public safety department instead of having one public safety director. And we had a director of police, a director of fire services. And we appreciate you stepping up into that position. Obviously, we compensated you as well. But that said, I think it makes sense. It makes sense for some more administrative support. And I know this was probably a very difficult couple of years to take on that role and to absorb part of somebody else's job in doing so, especially in public safety, especially in public safety because of what social isolation, the pandemic itself has done to our society and to our own individual mental health. So I appreciate the work you've done up to this point. I do think it makes sense to have more administrative support. And then adding the three, the three officers as well, patrol officers, I think makes sense, too. So.
Thank you. Summer?
I'll make a quick comment. I just want to say that I appreciate that you're also thinking about succession planning also. And so I'm glad to see that in here and happy to support this, even though we're not going to let you go anywhere.
Yeah, that's right. You can never retire, Chief Bow. No, we really appreciate it, and thank you. And like you said, our census has shown, you know, our community has grown. We're 98,659. And we know that there's probably more than that. But, you know, we're the ninth largest community in the state of Michigan. And you showed us, you know, how the surrounding communities have a lot more police officers. And I think our growing community deserves this also. But thank you. community deserves this also. But thank you. Any, no, any more comments? All right, great. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G seven. Redistricting auditor adjustment.
Madam Supervisor, hang on, I'm confused. Okay. I move to authorize the clerk, myself, to utilize the $7,000 approved for the redistricting auditor position as an independent contractor payment in lieu of an hourly employee payment model.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Snyderman. A qualified applicant has been selected and working on redistricting. However, the applicant has requested to serve as an independent contractor. The clerk is seeking authorization to utilize the $7,000 budget for this position as a contract payment in lieu of hourly payment with payment to be presented at the completion of the project minus any funds already received by the candidate. Clerk Seeger, do you want to add to that?
No, other than, it became abundantly clear based on like the level of service we were getting that using the part-time employment model is a way to adequately kind of pay this person would have required a lot of, it just became kind of problematic. They acted as an independent contractor. Their, their, their role, you know, they were given a project. They kind of implemented that project. They wanted to be an independent contractor. We'd attempted to kind of create this as an intern position. The individual who was the most qualified person for this position is a resident of New York, is employed in this field, and works as an independent contractor routinely. And so it was abundantly clear that the, it made more sense to kind of, to go this route, primarily because the work is done. The work is essentially done at this point, and the election commission will be voting on the map tomorrow.
Any questions or comments from the board? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G eight. Consider four-year priority-based budgeting software agreement with Resource X.
Madam Supervisor, I move to waive the bidding requirements for the, of the purchasing policy and approve a four-year priority-based budgeting software agreement and related implementation assistance with Resource X for a first-year cost of $75,000, followed by $35,000 per year for years two through four, and to approve the attached budget amendments.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Borninski. In accordance with the organizational assessment conducted in 2021, the finance and budget department is undertaking the initiative to implement priority-based budgeting beginning with the 2023 budget. To help achieve this goal, the finance and budget department is seeking the consultation of software from Resource X to better align budget dollars which achieving board goals and to increase transparency to Canton residents. Resource X is an expert in this arena, has demonstrated with their partnerships with many municipals, municipals nationwide and throughout the state of Michigan, and has the experience with GFOA. As such, we are requesting that the board waive the bidding requirements as outlined in the purchasing policy. Director Trumbull, do you want to add to that?
Sure. We, we expect to, this to be about a three-month process from kind of beginning to end at this point in time. An individual from Resource X, Chris Fabian, is on the line if the board has specific questions for them. They offered to give a presentation, but I said I didn't think that was necessary for tonight. They will meet with the board throughout to discuss milestones of the project, to kind of give updates as to where it stands. Kind of to kick it off in the beginning, it's going to, we at the township are going to have to identify the super users and have, it's obviously going to be very instrumental that we have a lot of participation from the departments to establish their program inventory so we can start assigning the various costs from our budget to the program. So from a processing standpoint, our internal budgeting process isn't, from the initiation isn't going to change. We're still going to have our line item budget. We're required to have that from the state perspective to actually report where our budget dollars are getting spent. And then we'll, after those kind of budgets are established, we, we take that information and they all get assigned to the different programs that we have within the township. And then it's really going to paint the story for, you know, the finance department has a budget of X amount, but now you're going to be able to see what does the finance department do? How much of the finance department's budget is spent on processing payroll, processing payables, on various meetings and whatnot? So it'll really paint a picture and tell the board the story of what we're currently spending our resources on, and then help align different programs that we're doing. Some are going to be mandated that we can't get away from, but others, we're going to have some flexibility on. And it'll help the board really, really see what we're spending our money on. So I'm, I'm excited about this process. You know, it's, it's going to be a little bit of work, but I think the end result is going to be fabulous for, for the board and the residents of the township. There's a few municipals in Michigan. If you haven't seen the results, if you go to like the City of East Lansing's website, I think the City of Ferndale, City of Ann Arbor, I think a number of them have implemented this priority-based budgeting, and you can kind of see the application and the results of those at different websites as well. As I said, Chris Fabian is on the call. If you have any specific questions for him, I'd be happy to answer what I can. And if you have any questions for him, I know he'd be welcome, or happy to answer any questions you have as well.
Thank you. And this is a project that Deputy Supervisor worked on and Director Trumbull, and it's a great project because it's going to allow the residents transparency in terms of they want to see how much like, let's say, a fire station or fire, you know, runs have, you know, cost, they can pull it up easily. And so this is going to give complete transparency with that. Like you said, there'll still be line item budgets, but they'll be able to go through the budget a little bit more clearly online. Are there any questions or comments? Michael?
You announced at staff today something about GFOA and how long we have been kind of being recognized. Can you reiterate that?
Yeah, we just received word last week that we received our 29th annual award for the certificate of achievement and excellent financial reporting. So that's really a shout out to the accounting, the finance department staff. Sometimes I get the glory, but they really do all the work. So in fact, we're in the middle of our audit right now, getting ready to complete this audit and apply for the 30th one. So it's a big undertaking, that award. The, the basis behind it is to try to encourage transparent financial reporting by giving financial statements, which is a big document, and I know it's hard to read, but there's a lot of information in the beginning of that report that explains what the results of the financial statements are, what are the, what are the board priorities, what's happening at the township, and what's going on. This, eventually, soon, we're going to try to do the same thing with our budget book, to try to get the same transparency with our budget book, but it really starts with the priority-based budgeting as well, because that, that is instrumental to put into the budget book to, to get this award. But yeah, the finance department did receive that award. It's a, you know, we've received it for so many years. People have come to expect it, as the board should expect us to work hard to get that award. But it's really, it's a very big compliment to the staff that they work so well together to, to get the information needed to continually get this award.
Yeah, at the risk of patting ourselves on the back even more, which we've been accused of, you know, to be acknowledged for 29 straight years by the Government Finance Officers Association is, is not a small feat. And there are not many organizations at the public level who can say that. So what's important is, you're already doing some amazing work. And I think that when we talk about this proposal, I'm really excited too. You know, I, it is really hard to understand a public budget. You know, I, I got elected to this, to the library board in 2008, and the school board in 2014, and I've been clerk here now since 2016. You know, I've, I have a master's degree in taxation from an accounting school. And I've been doing accounting work before I was elected clerk. I spent a lot of time looking at finance documents and understanding numbers. And government accounting is very challenging for residents to understand. You know, transfers from this account into transfers from that account. The beautiful thing, the most beautiful thing about this budget document is that the residents will be able to truly understand what the true cost is of running an election. That's beautiful. That's great. And that is real accountability. So we're already kind of excelling there, and we're going to go above and beyond. And I think that's, that's awesome. And I commend you for that. Pat yourself on the back.
That's right. Meets our board goals and two of our board goals. Tanya?
Yeah, I just, yeah, I see that, you know, you took the organizational assessment of the priority-based budgeting, and, you know, you made the effort to get the software and this firm to work with us so that, just like we have the road dashboard, you know, how our road mileage is being used, this is also going to be a great opportunity for the residents to understand where our money goes and how it's invested in the community. So I think this increases the transparency of how our local government works. So thank you for doing that.
Anyone else? Kate?
And after I talked about inflation before, I note that the annual renewal rate is set for three years, so that won't be going up for three years. So that's good. And then there's also a 30-day notice to terminate by others, each side. So I appreciate the flexibility that that gives us. So thank you for negotiating that.
Anyone else? Great. Okay, so the strategic goals here are financial stability and welcoming community and quality infrastructure. Great job. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G nine. Request approval of Maraki cloud service renewal.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the renewal of Cisco Maraki wireless cloud services for a period of three years in the amount, in an amount not to exceed $12,208.
Support. Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Snyderman. The township's wireless infrastructure is managed by cloud-hosted services provided by Cisco Maraki. The township must periodically renew its licensing with Maraki to maintain access to the management portal, support, maintenance, and equipment replacement warranty. The township's current support agreement expires May 20th, 2022. Renewal of this service is critical to provide uninterrupted access to township wireless network equipment and administrative management portal. Director Abegbu, would you like to add anything?
It's very crucial that we continue to maintain wireless access services throughout the township, because it supports not just the wireless devices that we have, laptops and all that, but it also supports many other devices that we use in things that, that provide services for us. So doing this will continue to allow us to provide services that we've come to rely on over the years.
Thank you. Any questions from the board or comments? No? Great. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. All right, the next item on our agenda is public comment. Public comment is three minutes. If you wouldn't mind raising your hand and then going up and giving your name and three minute speech, and then the board will give comment after that. We could basically comment on what you've said, or you can call us in the morning. We can give you some more information.
Mike Schultz, 44580 Dion Street. First off, I'd like to request about 1,500 bucks for beacons on Sheldon Road for the potholes that are there. I've brought this up before. I tried calling engineering. You guys don't have a phone number for engineering, and when you call, they don't call you back. That's number one. Number two, you guys may think you're doing a great job. I'd probably give you somewhere around a C. You could save yourself a lot of time instead of saying all in favor of aye, just have a recording and hit it, because you guys are all in lock step. My friend that spoke before is a conservative. I'm a conservative. I'm not real happy with what's going on. Mike said he's concerned about the water bill. I'm concerned about the tax collection fee, which you call a administration fee. For the money you charge, you could, you could be taking that money, cutting that by 10%, and you'd take care of the water bills for the next 10 years. There's a lot of other things, but three minutes goes fast, and I don't have the time in my stomach. Besides that, public comment should be first. I don't get paid to be here. I do not get paid. So you guys make me wait through this entire thing to make a comment. In previous administrations, public comment came first. Citizens should come first. We're not vassals that work for you. We're regular people. You know, try to have a little concern for people that have got to work for a living. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah, my name is Ted Lang. I'm here representing the school board for the Canton Preparatory High School, Charter High School, that is authorized under Grand Valley State University and operated by National Heritage Academies. I'd also like to recognize two other board members that are here tonight, Laura Mortier, Mortier, I keep giving you the French pronunciation, sorry, and Lawrence Milpin. Thank you. And also, I'd like to request if right after me, Ms. Schmatzer could speak because it will follow what I'm going to say, and I think she may need to get home pretty soon with the children she brought with her. So, thank you. So just a little history of charter schools in Michigan. Canton Charter Schools started all in, in year 2000. And my three children attended Canton Charter Academy, and I can tell you that it was a terrific experience, and it prepared all three of them very well to attend the park. The, the, the other schools that are here in addition to Canton, there's Achieve, South Canton Scholars, Plymouth Scholars, and now us as Canton Preparatory High School. And you could also add maybe South Point Scholars. I believe there's a former board supervisor that's on the school board, or it's a trustee of that school. So we're represented very well in, in the community, and we'd like to think that, you know, we represent, you know, a good citizen to the community. So these schools, you know, the five of them, serve over 3,600 students and young fives through their, their grade 13 program. Canton Charter and Achieve Charter Academies are national blue ribbon schools that recognizes exemplary public school based on overall academic excellence and progress in closing achievement gaps among student subgroups. So all the schools that I mentioned are top ranked in Michigan by the U.S. News and World Report for academic performance. A little bit about Canton Preparatory High School. I was part of the formation of that back in, in 2013, and it started operations in 2014, 2015 school year with just over 200 students in ninth and 10th grade, graduating its first class in, in 2017. So where does that lead us? Importantly, what's, I think is important is its involvement in the community. I know the police department has attended to, to speak about security procedures and reactions to maybe adverse accelerated events, things of that nature. And not to mention, obviously, the authorization of the land use and, you know, making sure that everything gets built and is inspected as it's supposed to. So all very important features, but maybe as an ask, more importantly, is that for your involvement, I'm sure I speak for all the schools that, please make an appointment sometime for a visit. So March is, what is it? It's National Reading Month, so a lot of the younger kids maybe could use somebody to come in and read for them. I've done that myself. It's, it's the most rewarding experience ever. Maybe just plan a visit, maybe more particularly for the high school, is to talk about the inner relationship between the school and its governing body, and particularly the government that, in which it sits. So come in and talk about how the Canton Township Board is part of the whole community and, and part of the, the school itself. Other than that, just, just visit, you know? Find out what it is that's in your community if you haven't already. So I really appreciate that. So thank you, board members, for all you do to make Canton Prep and all the other schools welcome, and for the success that you provide for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks for the kids being so great, too.
Opitz and fidget spinners, you know? They come in handy nowadays. Good evening. My name is Jennifer Schmatzer, and I have served in various roles in Canton Prep since 2015, the most recent being the high school dean for the last three years. Since 2014, we have strived to prepare each student for college success. Our vision, which is for all of our NHA high schools, is to educate, support, and guide students through a few of the most exciting and impressionable years of their lives. Our end objective is threefold: high school graduation, college acceptance, and enthusiastic students, thoughtfully prepared for vocational success in their communities and their world. We expect a lot from our students and their parents. Our enthusiastic staff, teachers, and administrators present challenging curriculum that encourages students to achieve a high level of excellence. This correlates directly to college entrance. We also focus on moral character, believing that character development is vital to growth and success. Our rigorous graduation requirements ensure our seniors are well-equipped to take full advantage of life after high school. We have a 100% college acceptance rate for each graduating class. It is part of their graduation requirements. All graduates also have successfully taken at least two AP courses to prepare them for college-level rigor, and all students earn Cs or better. We do not accept anything less than a C for high school credit. Furthermore, every senior completes community service as part of our commitment to the greater Canton community. In addition to these amazing accomplishments, our senior class continues to earn a substantial amount of scholarships. This is due in part to our rigorous standards and under the tutelage of our college advisor. To hit some of the highlights, the class of 2019 earned a combined 1.89 million in scholarships. The class of 2020 earned 2.17 million. The class of 2021- The class of 2021 earned 2.07 million. And our current seniors, as of this morning, added additional seventy-three thousand to their total, is currently at 2.28 million and counting. In addition to this curriculum, as well as the amazing accomplishments of our students, students can also choose to enter our early college program, which began in 2019. This is in partnership with Wayne County Community College Ted Scott's Campus, where students can enter the program during their sophomore or junior year and then are duly enrolled in both high school and college courses. Through the WC3D program, students can earn up to sixty transferable college credits for free. These courses are paid for by Canton Prep, and the Early Middle College Program offers continued supports through their early college advisors during their 10th and 11th grade years and our early college advising during their 12th and 13th years. Students are given more flexibility to choose courses that align with their field of interest during those 12th and 13th years, and our college counselors, along with Mrs. Almahany, who is also our college advisor, walks them through the transfer process to ensure their selections are accepted if students plan to transfer to a traditional college or university. Our inaugural 2019 class started with forty-four students. In 2020, it grew to seventy-six. In 2021, we then grew to ninety-seven and graduated our first cohort of 13th-year students, a total of six, who earned the equivalent of thirty college credits. They started the program during their senior year. And then in 2022, we are currently doing open enrollment and have already given out over forty applications to add to that cohort. And this year, we'll be graduating seventeen 13th-year students, twelve of them earning the equivalent of an associate's degree. We're very thankful for this community's partnership in furthering our students' education. We invite you to come visit us. We have some amazing events for our seniors coming up in April and May. I'd be more than happy to share those with you and have you come and visit. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments? Go ahead, sir.
Excuse me. My name is Rich Conway. I live at 43721 Bannockburn Drive. My neighbors and I, over the last several months, have raised a number of issues with what we call the drug house that's located across from Miller Elementary School. The township has not been responsive at all to any of our complaints, our comments, whatever. In fact, I find that what the township has said regarding this issue to us on occasion and to the news media is not even credible. Comments such as no legal recourse, hands are tied, marijuana is allowed in homes, those are vague comments, all of which we've heard, not from the township, but second-hand from the news media when they contacted us. I'm curious as to why such vague comments are used as a basis for, at least in my opinion, not doing anything to address our complaints. Is there some MCL citation, some specific wording in the law that you folks feel confident in relying on for doing nothing? And if so, feel free to let me know what it is. I might want to debate it with somebody at some time. If you're confident in your position, I trust you'll let me know what that citation or those specific words from the law are. I can't seem to find them. We would like, and when I say we, I'm talking about my neighbors and I, some of whom are here with me today, we would like some specifics to find out what you're actually relying on. For a home where there's supposedly no illegal activity whatsoever, there was an awful lot of interesting activity there yesterday, right after some people from Channel Seven approached people at that home. Very interesting activity. I've heard some comments from the police department, reported in the newspaper and on Channel Seven tonight. And I'll quote these: "Personal use of marijuana is legal." Do we know it's just personal use that's going on at that home? I think there's an awful lot of indication that it's something a lot different than personal use. Comments about caregivers being allowed to do certain things. Anybody checked and verified that the people at that home have a caregiver license? "No obvious violations of law," yet we're investigating complaints. Why are you investigating something if there's no obvious violation? Isn't that a contradiction? "No probable cause," yet I was told, as I'll get to in a minute here, that a police officer was going to go into that home. Why would a police officer go into a home where there's no obvious violation of the law and you have no probable cause? I finally got a call from the police department on March 10. That was subsequent to my last visit here to a township trustee meeting, and after the news media became interested and started asking questions about that home. I was told that the township may have found a way to prosecute for a nuisance odor.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Time is up. You can speak to us after the meeting tomorrow. Okay? Okay. No, can I, another comment? Anyone else? You can talk to us after the meeting, sir.
Want to yield some time to me, Helen?
Okay, go ahead. Three minutes.
Thank you, by the way. Received a call from the police department on March 10 after the news media started asking questions about that home. May have found a way to prosecute for a nuisance odor. Apparently, however, subsequent to that phone call, somebody told the news media that they were just going to warn the owners of that home, or the alleged owners of that home. I was also told in that March 10 phone call that there were going to be inspections done, an issue that I raised at, I think, the March 1 board meeting. The inspections were supposed to have been done next week, or what was called "next week," according to my understanding. That would have been last week. I don't know if those inspections were done or not. Does anybody? Anybody want to let me know later? I brought up another issue, the litter issue, that I call it, was raised by me at the meeting on March 1. That litter issue stems from the owners, or not occupants, but the owners or the people who visit that home, installing some equipment and then littering the backyard with the remnants or the packaging of that equipment. That litter blew into my yard. It's still there, going on four months. I was told by the person who called me from the police department that someone from the township had looked into the yards and saw nothing. When I mentioned that I had pictures and video that I take at regular interviews of refugees blowing around the yard and the litter still stuck in my yard, the caller wanted some specifics. When I gave him some specifics, items of litter and where they were in the yard, he claimed that he couldn't see some of the litter. The area that he claimed he couldn't see the litter in is the most visible area of that yard. You can see it from the street. You can see it from across the street. I was also told that the police department had left a message for me, telling me that the litter had been cleaned up, which it obviously hadn't been. When I mentioned that we might compare some detailed call logs, both mine and the township's, the story changed. The message must have been left for someone else at some other number. This is getting to be preposterous. The police department was going to talk to that man who supposedly owns that home again, for what, the fourth or fifth time? Are you ever going to cite him? You're just going to warn him? You're going to call him and wish him a happy birthday? Am I supposed to clean up the litter? I was taught you clean up your own mess. Four months, and the litter is still there. The township has missed both the little picture on this situation.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Anybody else want to give me some time?
Next. So, okay, sir, so you are all, by letting him do this, you're not coming up to speak then? You're giving that? Okay.
The little picture is what's going on at that house, or what we believe is going on at that house.
Keep going, sir.
The big picture is what may be going on away from that house and what stems from what's going on in the house. I realize that an investigation would take time and effort, but the township has done nothing. You don't even talk a good game about this. I've got all kinds of comments, calls, emails, texts. Nobody believes what you're saying. You have to pardon me, but it's darn near slapstick. You people are just running the issue around in circles. I don't know why you don't want to deal with this guy for even such a simple thing as litter, but you obviously don't. You're going to call him again. Somebody in this room owes me two phone calls, and I haven't got those yet. And I don't expect to get them. Thank you.
Next comment?
Barbara Conway, same address as his. I don't think the board is understanding what we're dealing with. The odor from this home is pervasive. I'm smelling it in my basement. Jim and Helen are smelling it in their bedroom. This is in the dead of winter. We're not going to be able to sit in our backyards this summer. I would like to have a barbecue. Would someone on the board volunteer their property so I can entertain my friends? I don't think so. You have to wonder how many plants are in this property that the smell is so strong. We need an ordinance. Canton has plenty of ordinances. Ask anybody who has a corner lot and wants a privacy fence. I've lived here long enough that when Big Boy had the statue, everybody was up in arms over a short, obese, bald, white man in front of a building. That had to be removed. Without regulation, there's nothing to prevent other vacant homes from becoming grow operations. We could have them on every block in Canton. That's not hyperbole, especially if growers know they can operate here with impunity. We cannot and should not stand for this. Finally, I'd be remiss if I failed to remind the board, you are here to serve the residents of Canton, not some outside, non-resident entrepreneurs who have no vested interest in our quality of life.
Any other comments? Come to the front.
Set the timer. Okay, let's start, since we're probably underneath the hammer for three minutes evidently. I got a letter from the township here. You own a dump fifty-five acres, South and Morton Taylor. Bought it years ago, fifty thousand. It's in public record, Brownfield. I asked what you're going to do since you have a tree program, green space. The answer is we're not planting any trees on the dump you own. Let's go over here to the focus. Message from the supervisor. Green space development occurs, and it is unfortunate that Texas-based outfit chooses to fight it in court. So evidently, they wanted to clear their parking lot for equipment or gravel, for example, landscaping business, and the tree ordinance, you wanted to enforce it. Evidently, you're not doing it here, and you haven't done it in the past, even if it changes now, as of today. The trees, there hasn't been any trees on that for thirty years. Let's go on. Okay, the gun range, since you're on to that, green space. The township, a few years ago, I was over in Wayne, salvage yard there, looking around. Okay, gondolas, there's four of them, brass and shotgun shells. All lead, half ounce or ounce, or how many ounces in a four-by-four-by-four-foot-high? That scrap iron outfit told me it come from Canton. That's a lot of lead. So what's with the lead in the dump, not the dump, but the gun range? Why isn't that being addressed? Okay, let's go to the roads over here on Canton Center Road. I'm going down Merriman Road and Michigan Avenue area contractors over there, and even here. They've told me they're not, when they get a four- or five-million-dollar job, they don't have to cover the concrete when it rains. So it beats out the strength in the concrete. I've been around concrete, both thousands of yards of it. All these coal-powered plants and down at Renaissance, thousands of yards. So I'd like to know why that we can't have it. They say it's a state ordinance, but I want any of you guys to pour your patio on it, rain on it, and ask the guy that's pouring it why he doesn't cover it with a piece of visqueen. They can do a five-million-dollar job, for example, but they can't afford ten thousand dollars with a visqueen? Now, let's go to potholes. We're paying for that deal over on Canton Center Road. They put tar in that, whatever little section they cut out. I want to know if Wayne County is going to come back next year or two years later and re-tar so the salt and stuff and water doesn't get in it and crack it again. I'd like to know the strength, the slump test on that, on every pore they make, public record. So they're not cheating on the strength of it, whoever does it, the strength of the concrete. Next thing is, I've always argued this issue, you see the green rebar, okay? That's Teflon coated so it doesn't rust. Anytime you, when you're doing farm work, you spray it with a film of oil so you can get the forms off. If there's any oil gets on the rebar, it's rejected by inspectors. Don't you put a drop on it?
All right, thank you.
Because it doesn't stick.
Thank you.
So what, excuse me?
Thank you. Your three minutes are up. Thank you.
Yeah, well, maybe, we'll get to it next time then.
Any other comments? Any other comments? Let me look online. Any comments online? Any comments online? Simanal, okay, go ahead. Simanal? Manal, go ahead and speak.
Yes, I'm sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. I wanted to see if I would be able to put an item on the agenda for the next meeting.
What is, go ahead.
So I have a property in Canton. It's 1022 on Sheldon Road, and we've been kind of going back and forth, and right now it's on the demo list. And I've been advised by my attorney to go ahead and do a last-minute, come to the board and go ahead and see if I can be able to put this on the agenda and see if we'd be able to resolve it, where I can go ahead and bring it up to code. This is a property that I just purchased December, and I've been applying for the permits, and I was asked to go ahead and provide two structural, actually, one structural engineer report, which I did, and that was actually rejected by the building director. And then I went ahead and provided another one, which was also rejected. So my question to you is, am I able to put this on the agenda in hopes of being able to hold the permits, make the necessary work, bring it up to code?
You can call the office in the morning where we decide, we discuss what's going to happen next week on the agendas, but I don't, I think we can just do this without putting it on the agenda.
Of course.
Okay?
So call the office tomorrow, and I apologize, what office would I be calling?
Call the supervisor's office.
Supervisor's office, okay. I will do. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Just a point, Madam Supervisor, just a point of order. There is no provision in government history for at least three hundred years where citizens will put items on an agenda. So I think it's important. I don't know if there was a miscommunication from corporation counsel, but typically, only an elected official has the capacity to bring an item forward for consideration. Everything that comes through the administration is brought under through the auspice of the supervisor's office. So obviously, you're correct in sending them to your office.
Thanks. Yes, we could talk about it, what the issue is. All right, any other, anybody else online? Anyone else online? Anyone else online? Okay, now we move to board comment, although, let's see. I think the board members would probably like Chief Chad to talk, but I will start with the board. Kate, do you have anything to say?
I do, a little bit. I just wanted to note, first of all, that today is World Water Day. And so I thought our discussion of the water and sewage rates was kind of timely, but also want to note how important water is to all life on Earth. And so I think that World Water Day is very important to note. I also am sorry that our officials from the Canton Preparatory Academy have left because I would be happy to go visit their school. Having been a school board member for PCCS, schools are very important to me. And I actually did have the opportunity to tour Canton Prep in 2015, so I would welcome the opportunity to go back there and see it again. But I do want to say that I think that sometimes visits like that can be kind of disruptive if they're not expecting us. So I would hope that they would send us an invitation, not just a blanket one, but one where they would invite us for a particular day or time because I don't want to interrupt any learning that's going on.
Actually, Sharonda has letters from them, so she's trying to schedule some times and dates. So she, yeah, we can all coordinate on that.
Okay, that sounds good.
Steven?
The only thing, comment that I have tonight is that I just wanted to send my thoughts to the people of the Ukraine, who I believe are unjustly under attack. to the people of the Ukraine, who I believe are unjustly under attack. And I hope for peace in their region. If there's anything we thought we might be able to do, whether it's a board resolution, something to Congress or something like that, we can discuss it and see if there's something we can bring forward. I believe they're fighting for freedom, and I support them in that fight.
Thank you. Diane?
This was a great meeting, great conversation. Thank you for the water rate study session. Excuse me, I appreciate that so much. And congratulations to you and your staff, Wendy. That's another awesome thing. And then I just want to reiterate to residents about the administrative fee on your property taxes. It does pay for not just the postage and the printing, it pays for the assessments of the, of folks. It pays to protect the role, the tax role. So those dollars are important, and they go to protecting the role, which is so important. So I don't know why, I know the gentleman always thinks it's just for the postage and printing, and it isn't. So I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
I'm sorry, the role being, just for the community out there, which is basically the actual dollars that, right? So you're protecting those dollars.
Yeah, or if we have to, if we have, you know, like with the big box, you know, there were lawsuits, so we have to pay for attorney fees.
Yep.
Protecting our tax.
Thank you. Tanya?
Yeah, I just wanted to, everyone to know that there is a Chinese festival being celebrated this Saturday at the Cherry Hill Village Theater. So if you're interested, please go and watch this. And there's also the International Festival that's coming up in June during the Liberty Fest. So those are some big items that are, big events that are coming up.
Great. Thank you. Summer?
I just want to reiterate my congratulations to the Department of Leisure Services, especially Greg and his team on their award from M. Parks. I think, you know, what was supposed to be a really nice moment for the board kind of got stepped on by someone making a political argument about this township's commitment to inclusion. But I really do appreciate your staff and your hard work in doing everything you can to make everyone within Canton feel included. So thank you.
Let's pass that along to the staff again. Thank you. Michael?
Yes, Summer, I'm glad, I'm glad you said that, and because I was planning on saying something similar. You know, I, I think everybody up here would argue that there is absolutely nothing we wouldn't do for any resident of Canton Township, regardless of what their political perspective is. That said, the residents elected a board of trustees that have some values, and we put them in our document last year about the direction we wanted to go in. And inclusivity is a part of that, and it's central to that. And creating a welcoming community for all people is part of that. And so I am grateful that Leisure Services has taken that commitment. And it's not just us who are acknowledging you for it, it's your peers at the state level. And anytime you get accolades from your peers, that's saying a lot, because they know the job you have to do. So your team is doing an amazing job. And, and you know, and I hope that every resident knows that we are working for them, kind of regardless of what they, you know, who they voted for, whatever, like that's irrelevant at this point. We are delivering relevant services to the residents, so. Other than that, you know, intense meeting, very intense meeting. I wasn't at the last one, unfortunately, because I had COVID. But, yeah, you know, and my heart kind of goes out to the residents who are struggling with the marijuana odor on their street. And they're very passionate about that. You know, I am aware that there has been a lot of effort. I'm sure you're going to talk about this, Ann Marie.
Yes.
I have heard through the grapevine, there's been a lot of effort. And I know that the chief is not in the, in the room now, because he's hopefully having conversations with those individuals outside and letting them know all of the arduous work that we have done to try to ensure that we promote public safety. So, you know, that said, I do not necessarily know that residents understood all of the intricacies in the law when they legalized marijuana at the ballot box. And I don't know that the legislature understood the intricacies of what they were allowing when they passed a law that allowed for medical marijuana. You know, people can have, you know, when I found out that they could have over 70 plants at that house if they wanted to, by law, without breaking, you know, that, that's, that's something I think that we might want to talk to the legislature about, and that might be worth having a conversation about what is a reasonable amount of marijuana plants to have in a residentially zoned area. But that said, you know, you're doing good work, so. Thanks.
Thank you. A couple of comments, and some of the comments made is in terms of, yes, the Canton Township does own a field, a green field, and that is considered green space. We don't need to place trees. It's considered a field, and it is considered green space. In terms of the potholes, in terms of what the makeup of the material is in the potholes, Wayne County can be FOIA'd, and they can give you a breakdown of the chemicals, of the tar that they put in. And in terms of the marijuana, I just like to say, like Michael said, Chief Chad Bowes and I didn't hear you speaking to the residents outside, but I know he's been very communicative. And he's been, the police force have been doing a lot on this, and the ordinance officers have been doing a lot. They have been very diligent. But of course, some things we, when things are under investigation, we have to be, keep things confidential. And also, we have to protect the rights of residents, both homeowners and those neighbors. So that is a very delicate balance that we must follow. And Chief Chad Bowe is speaking to residents, and we will, obviously, the residents that live in a home and the residents that live around homes are very important to us, their rights and their values, and we are working the way we can. So if anyone has any other questions, again, they can call us on that, call Chief Chad Bowe. He's, can give what he can, information he can give out, and he's in the hallway right now speaking to residents. Anything else anyone else has to say? Staff comments? Greg?
I just wanted to want to echo again, thank you for your support of staff in particular for their recognition tonight. They certainly appreciate that, and goes a long way for them. But I wanted to point out one thing, that one of the comments that was made specifically was about the cost of these types of events, and as we mentioned with, specifically with Laura's efforts in sponsorships. I pulled the report from last year for the Wally event, just to kind of get an idea of what the cost after, after sponsorships and fees. The township expense for that event last year was $530.81. That's what the township invested into that event. So it was certainly not a significant expense at all for the township. So just to put some perspective on that, where the Holiday Lights event that was, is more traditionally tied to a Christian-type event was...
And we have all kinds of donations. We, a lot of companies, restaurants were there.
Right, yeah. That event was $6,000, which was still, for the number of people that we serve, fairly economical, but just when you compare, we still are making an investment on both ends. So to be fair, I think we service...
And served hundreds of our residents, and we've gotten...
Service everybody, and we do...
We've gotten a lot of comments, thank yous for those, and phone calls, emails, so, yes.
I don't want to get too far into the weeds, but I just wanted to mention those couple little points. Thank you.
And for purposes of the First Amendment, we are not celebrating any religions in any capacity in any of our events.
No.
Nor would I want to appropriate any taxpayer dollars to do so, because that would be grossly inappropriate.
That's why it's a Holiday Lights event that may be traditionally associated with those events, but not specifically.
Right. Any other staff comments? No? All right, where are we in the agenda? Let's see.
On the agenda.
All right, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segras, supported by both Treasurer Slavens and Trustee Foster. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Yay.